Hear me? I'm gonna have to use the mic tonight because I got a little angitis. Uh, let's open the meeting to the Donald Farmington planning board. Um, couple administrative things, make sure everybody is signed in. Secondly, when you go to talk, if I turn on the mics back there, it picks up everything. So if you have a sidebar conversation like it's going on right up here, then all that will be recorded forever. So when I click that mic on, I'll tell you, you're gonna admit to do it. Remember my comments right now, so be careful that you don't get caught in the YouTube. Whatever, okay? Um, emergency exits over here and the one you came in at. Do you have an emergency generator if we need it?
Uh, we don't, we don't do not at the moment.
Never mind, we do not have.
We have emergency lighting.
Yep.
Yeah.
In that case, just follow me.
That's, okay, it's always the case. Whenever anything happens, you need something, just follow Ron. Um, whatever. Get you to sign in there if you would. I assume you're here for the planning board? Okay, alright. So, we're gonna follow the agenda that was over on the table. We, uh, and we have a number of, I'm sorry, Ron, go ahead, what I? Oh, pledge your leave, maybe we should do that first. Adrian, would you lead us in the pledge? I can't talk.
I live in the city of Atlanta, the head states of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll be following the rules and procedures adopted by this board earlier this year. First item up is the approval of minutes, last meeting. Does anybody have any comments, questions they concern? Or have a motion to approve? Clued by Doug, seconded by Adrian, any other comments? All favors signify, I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Legal notices were published in the town newspaper um, on Wednesday, November twenty ninth. Order of business is, the first one up is a continued subdivision, PB zero seven zero two dash twenty three, a preliminary three lot subdivision. Uh, we have a continued public hearing on this. Uh, this is for Pheasants Crossing. Do we have anybody? See anybody?
Anybody online?
Is there anybody online to talk about PB zero seven zero two dash twenty three? I don't think so.
Alright, Ed, with that being said, uh, I would like to enter in a letter into the minutes that we received from Evans and Fox, uh, attorneys, uh, stating that they have taken over the legal representation for the Fowler Family Trust. Uh, and they have requested, uh, this matter to be tabled, uh, so that they can have time to meet with staff and come back in a January meeting. Uh, due to they're just taking over this project.
Okay, and we talked about that offline. Um, I'm gonna recommend, I think it's the twentieth of January, I think is our second meeting in January. We're gonna, I'm gonna recommend that, but this is a public hearing, so let's first, does any other staff wanna say anything about this project? I didn't do.
I, I did talk with Jared Hurt.
Okay, that's the new attorney, correct?
Attorney. As of last Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So he's trying to catch up with everything that's been going on for the past few months. And would like to sit down with town staff and the town attorney and understand where everything is at, so that he can perhaps move this thing along. Uh, and I'm all for that.
I think everybody's all for that, so. This is a public hearing, do we have anyone here to speak for or against this application? Anyone here to speak for or against the Fowler application for the three lot subdivision? Knowing that we did not at this point receive information that we were, we requested, and there's still some back and forth, so now we got the attorney involved, a new attorney, so. Our expectation is, is that it will eventually move forward, one way or the other. It will go there, I know the ZBA had talked about it at their last meeting. So anybody else online or in the room, uh, Dan, go ahead.
It looks like actually you might have somebody online that's gonna speak for.
Uh, yes, can I, is it, Dan, is it all right if I speak?
Yeah, go ahead and tell us your name, where you live, go ahead and speak.
So, my name is Maureen Despenza, and I live at six two three seven Pheasants Crossing.
Okay.
I live across from the property in question.
Okay.
And I guess my question is, I've read the materials um, that Sarah was good enough to email to me. With the change in attorneys, you had in your resolution that if Mr. Fowler and company didn't provide necessary information to complete the application, I'm looking for the date, forgive me, I don't see it at this moment, but certainly by the next meeting that this application then would be closed, declined for being incomplete. Does that still hold true with the change in attorneys?
Well, I think you're talking about a ZBA action that they took at the ZBA meeting, this is the planning board, a different entity, so the answer is no, we do not have those criteria. We do expect to talk about what's going on at the January twentieth planning board meeting. Excuse me, which will be before the zoning board meeting. Dan?
That is the seventeenth meeting.
I'm sorry, seventeenth of January. But our next meeting, uh, our next second meeting in January. Did Dan answer your question?
I, I think so, but you folks make your determination before it goes back to zoning.
We need to make.
I think she's talking about the draft resolution that was drafted for tonight before the letter came in.
Okay.
That was posted.
Right, exactly, that's exactly right.
The answer is, we're not gonna act on that because we have a request to fully application till the second meeting in January.
Uh, that's what I needed to know, thank you.
Did that answer it?
It does, it did, thank you very much.
Yes, and yes, we are looking at the environmental record right now. We have not gone into the actual application at this point.
But you're still looking for information, right?
Correct, correct, we do not have a completed application at this point. We have determined that we need additional information before we could move forward with the environmental record.
That's perfect, thank you.
Okay, wanna make sure you got your information. If anyone else wants to speak for or against that application, we got Dan wants to say so.
Alright, so, uh, we talked about that your second meeting would be the seventeenth. If that is the meeting that you do decide to move it to tonight, submittal for that, um, with the holidays and everything, we were looking at Friday the fifth by noon. To get all the information.
I still am not convinced that that works.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with Ed, I've when I saw this stuff come out, I mean, the holidays and everything else and the smittle dates, I mean, I know what the lawyer asked for, but I really think he I mean, I believe that they're gonna need more time, like.
What's the first?
I would try to try to shoot for the first meeting in February, I mean.
The first meeting in February would be the seventh of February.
And what's the smittle date?
We would need everything by the twenty fourth of January.
Let's do that.
I'm on.
Let's do that. Let's do seventh February, even though they asked for January, didn't seem reasonable because they still have everything to us by the fifth of, uh, January then, which is with the holidays and vacations and everything. Let's do seventh of February.
With a smittle date of the twenty fourth by noon.
I think that's more reasonable.
Okay. John, did you get that? Okay, anybody else wanted to say anything on this application? Um, we had a resolution, are we just gonna just table it?
You, you had a resolution, you need to fill in the blank.
Okay. I know I printed here somewhere, John's gonna take care of that, so we have a resolution to table this till now, now we're gonna move it to the seventh of February. Yeah, continuation. Yeah. Terminology. Okay, anybody have any issues with that? Do I have a motion?
Move by Adrian.
Move by Adrian, seconded by. Doug, any other comments? Let's take a roll call though, please.
I'm Beat, I'm Karen Sweeney.
Aye.
Excuse me, I had him.
Aye. Okay, so Fowler application has been continued to the seventh of February. They have a submission date of the twenty fourth at noon. But we'll know on that time if we have the sufficient information we have, what we need, and or there's been some other change that that whatever happened, so. Just to keep you up to speed, that's what's going on, which also means that the ZBA cannot rule on this, well, they certainly can rule on it, but they probably won't rule on it in January, it'll be moved to February. Okay? Okay, let's move on to the next item, anybody here for Fowler can leave if you want. I don't know why you'd wanna leave all this excitement. Uh, PB one two zero one dash twenty three, overall preliminary one hundred eighty lot subdivision for the Canago Development Corp., this is paddock landing, correct?
Correct.
Try to get all these project names straight. Go ahead and introduce yourself, my friend, and move on.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Ryan Destro from BME Associates.
Ryan.
Uh, here with me tonight is Rob Brenner and Brian Mahoney from Canago Development Company LLC. Uh, we are here for the attic landing.
Mm-hmm.
It was only on our property. And we are seeing overall preliminary subdivision and site plan. Uh, to recap, on June twenty ninth, twenty twenty three, the town board approved revolution number two five seven dash twenty twenty three, and that was to rezone the paddock landing property from RS twenty five lands and limited industrial lands to incentive zoning and allow for the proposed development, which consists of one hundred eighty six single-family or sale residential lots and a maximum of fifty thousand square feet of commercial and light industrial space along the Route ninety six corridor. The subject property itself consists of two tax parcels for a total of approximately one hundred forty seven point seven acres. Um, this is located along the north side of New York State Route ninety six, uh, to the east of the Fairdale Glen, um, townhome development and west of County Road East. It also extends all the way up to the north of Colette Road, and the property is also located in the town of Farmington, MTOD, Major Grove Airway District along Route ninety six. The preliminary subdivision, um, as mentioned, uh, contains one hundred eighty six single-family lots on approximately ninety five point eight, or ninety five, ninety eight point five acres, which encompasses the northern roughly eighty percent of the property. There's also, um, three commercial slash light industrial lots, um, they're located on approximately eleven point six acres at the southern limits of the property along Route ninety six. This project also includes one lot, um, point oh five acres, this lot is to be dedicated to the town of Farmington, uh, for the sanitary pump station lot. Finally, this parcel also includes four open space areas totaling thirty seven point six acres. Um, the open space areas encompass the existing wetland areas on site and the proposed stormwater management areas. The lot standards for the single-family residential development are as follows. The minimum lot size is thirteen thousand six hundred square feet, and the minimum lot width is eighty feet at the front setback, and that includes a minimum lot depth of one hundred and seventy feet. The front setback is proposed to be thirty five feet, but a thirty foot rear setback, and twelve foot sides, or twelve and a half foot side setbacks for a twenty five foot minimum between home structure. The residential portion also includes a maximum building coverage of thirty. For the commercial light industrial portion of the development, the minimum lot size proposed is twenty five thousand square feet with a minimum lot width of a hundred feet, a minimum lot depth of two hundred and fifty feet. And the front setbacks for the commercial portion, there's two of them, one being fifty feet off the internal access drive to the subdivision, and then seventy foot front setback off of the Route ninety six frontage. The commercial area also includes thirty foot rear inside setbacks and a maximum building coverage of thirty five percent. Um, and I'll also get on or touch with the site plan as well. Um, as far as the preliminary site plan, the property will be accessed by two road connections, as I mentioned, to Route ninety six.
Mm-hmm.
They will be offered in dedication to the town of Farmington, and they will provide access to all of the commercial lots and residential lots within the development. The, uh, we're also proposing um, two right-of-way reservations, they've been provided to allow future access to the property, to the property to the west. Should that be developed in the future, and it also eliminates the need for additional wetland crossings from Route ninety six to serve at that property to the west. Um, the road, a right-of-way, also extend to the eastern property limits um, for the same to allow access should the property to the east be developed and developed. The residential development itself, the hundred eighty single-family homes are proposed to be, or they're anticipated to be completed and pre-visited uh, by the developer. Uh, with regards to the commercial development, the preliminary site plan shows fifty thousand square feet of commercial space, uh, or shows how it can be developed along the Route ninety six um, frontage. The phasing will ultimately be determined by respective users and demand, and at that time, separate individual site plan additions will be submitted when a user is identified. And obviously, at that point, the layout will be tailored specifically for that user, uh, once identified.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as you'll also know on this plan, all driveways to the commercial parcels will be off of the two proposed access drive to the subdivision, and um, another previous comment from this planning board, um, that we've addressed on the site plans, the driveways are shown in the rear of the structures to allow greater queuing and stacking along the access roads, and that was a comment from this board as part of the incentive zoning.
Good. Mm-hmm.
For pedestrian connectivity, um, con- concrete sidewalks are proposed along one side of all of the roads within the subdivision of the development. Um, also along Route ninety six, property frontage, and the site plans also show, um, sidewalks to the west offsite to Fairdale Glen. However, that sidewalk, that portion of the sidewalk is intended to be constructed by the town of Farmington, um, per the incentive zoning agreement. This project also shows a concrete sidewalk from the residential development, uh, to Colette Road to the north. Uh, some additional site amenities proposed to serve the development include um, street trees for the incentive zoning resolution requirements. Um, Ron noted the lot numbering may have changed from the concept plan to now, but um, the scheme that was identified in the incentive zoning resolution changes, um, for the tree layout. And also, lighting is proposed at the road intersection of the residential development. Um, as I touched on earlier, this project does contain wetlands on the property. A state wetland bisects the southern portion of the property, and federal wetlands are located in the northern portion of the property. Uh, the two public access roads will cross the state wetland, um, located at the southern portion of the property, that will be to access the residential lots to the north. The onsite wetlands have been delineated by BME Associates, and, uh, we did receive jurisdictional determinations from both the BEC and the current Army Corps of Engineers verifying our delineations, and we've also subsequently, um, submitted a wetland crossing from the application to the BEC where they're. With regards to traffic, um, Hasser Associates completed a traffic study due to January twenty twenty three. This study was submitted to the D, or to the, uh, New York State Department of Transportation earlier this year for review. On March twentieth, uh, twenty twenty three, the DOT issued a letter based on their review of the traffic study, and there are two important statements in it, and that this letter is included in the application package. The first statement, uh, that's important to note is, well, we agree with the proposed driveway quantity and locations, and number two, we agree the residential portion of this development will not create a significant impact to the New York State DOT highway system, and that no mitigation will be required around ninety six as part of the residential development. With regards to utilities, um, this project is proposed to be served by public water mains throughout the development. Uh, this will be via two connections to the existing public water main around ninety six, and then also one future connection to the water main located to the north along Colette Road. Um, that will be part of the final phase of the residential development. Sanitary sewer, um, proposed to be served by, um, an internal public gravity sanitary sewer system. This will convey the development flows to an onsite sanitary sewer pump station, which is located in the northeastern part of the development or the lowest portion of the property. From there, worksman will convey a sanitary flows from this development um, offsite to the west along ninety six with connection to the existing town of Farmington Gravity Sanitary Sewer System. The pump station itself ha- also has the ability to serve um, not only this development, but the adjoining, portions of the adjoining lands as well to the west and east, and offers the ability to allow some of the, um, adjacent homes to the east and west, um, to connect in the future should they choose to use, so, and then get off of their individual subjects. Stormwater management, um, this development has been designed to meet the New York State Stormwater Management Design Manual guidelines for both water quality and water quantity. Um, it's proposed to be served by public storm sewers throughout the development, which are designed to convey stormwater runoff uh, to onsite by retention areas for quality, and then also two onsite stormwater management facilities are proposed. Um, they're located in the southeastern portion of the property and then also in the northern part of the property. Um, it is important to note that post-development peak runoff rates on the development have been designed to be less than the existing uh, pre-exi- uh, pre-development peak runoff rates, um, as required by the BEC. So, in summary, the overall preliminary site plan and subdivision um, application that has been submitted is in conformance with the conditions of the town board incentive zoning resolution for this project. This project, um, is classified as a seeker type one action. Um, as such, we, we understand that the planning board has a draft resolution, uh, to tonight declare their intent to be lead agency. Uh, we are looking forward to continuing this public hearing, and then also starting the coordinated review process. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any of the questions.
Thank you, Ryan, we'll turn it over to staff, Rod?
Yeah, uh, Ryan has summarized it very well. Uh, tomorrow, we will start the coordinated review with the involved and interested agencies, as well as the thirty day public review and comment period. Um, I'd like to point out that this is the first uh, instance where we're doing this both electronically and um, in paper form, if the agencies, involved agency need it. Um, we're trying to save as many trees as we can. And as a result, uh, we have we sending the notices both by US mail and electronically to the, uh, agencies, the involved agencies. So, with that, we're looking at the second meeting in January, uh, which I believe is
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Um, for the uh, planning board to designate themselves as lead agency if there's no objection, and move forward with the environmental process and
Environmental.
Continued public hearing.
Thank you, Ron, appreciate it. Dan?
Um, yeah, th- there's not much more for me to add to this one at this point, because we are just introducing this project to you. On the seventeenth, you will have all staff comments.
Right.
Uh, that you would normally see, that's why you, you don't see it yet, just because this was the introduction and it starts the thirty day. Um, so when they come back on the seventeenth, you will have a full staff comment review.
Good, cool, thank you. Tim?
Yeah, no, it's been a little while since I've seen this project in front of me, so.
Get to it. There'll be dedicated roads?
Yep, right.
For you, no trail?
No trail.
Well, one trail.
One trail, but it's thorough. Oh, and the sidewalk, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Lance?
No, we received it, we're reviewing it, we'll have comments as soon as possible.
My only comment to you, Lance, is keep a good eye, especially on the north detention ponds, because you know that the residents were concerned about that, I know theoretically it works, but let's make sure that we do our best to make sure there's new additional flow of water, it may be less, but we can get that taken care of. Okay, this is a public hearing, do we have any residents that'd like to speak for or against this application? You do, can I tell you, have your name and your address, please?
Noah Rondy, two six seventy six, uh, five issue.
Okay.
I'm the little guy in the middle of the.
Okay.
Uh, I didn't get, uh, this water is gonna be sport, it's gonna be, uh, public sewer? It's gonna be, uh, a septic.
A public sewer, right?
All public sewer.
All public sewer. Yep, public sewer, public water, everything. Yeah, you can't, you can't, cream, with that, you couldn't do septic, I don't think, with those lot sizes.
And you just one more question, uh, any targets like some of the breaking grounds in the day?
Yeah. App, app, application completion, final, plus, whatever it takes them to do it.
So, you think, man, this is the first step on the process, I mean, ultimately, we're you would anticipate breaking ground this year.
Right.
For, for all, twenty twenty four, I should say.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's just, yeah, you gotta go through the whole process, seeker and the rest, although it's been certainly vetted by the town board and incentive zoning, so they put their requirements on, so probably less than some of our other projects, certainly. We gotta make sure all the stormwater is correct and all the rest, um, so we can move forward. Anything else by anybody? Yes, ma'am. Name and address? Okay. It's a concept, correct?
Okay. And at that time, there was two hundred plus homes.
Correct.
Town board already approved all of this, and.
Town board has approved the incentive zoning, which sets the number of homes and the basic layout. Town, the planning board now does our best to make sure that all the pieces are put together and from a design standpoint, everything works, but they did decrease the number of homes. The town board decided to have fewer.
And what about like the environmental things and stuff that involves on, that are done?
No.
From the first.
We are starting the state environmental quality review um, in about thirty days.
So, it's, it's all starting fresh, then?
Well, it's starting, not necessarily fresh, but the environmental record is what we're gonna handle. And then, once we get the environmental record done, then we do the um, subdivision, and then we do the actual site plan. Yep?
I was curious, I got a letter this time, probably about the two. There, I'm sure I never got a letter saying that there was anything going on.
Because we didn't have an official application before us, we had a concept. We don't notify because for concepts, correct, Dan?
Correct.
And we don't notify for concepts. We notify for actual applications where we actually put a number on it. This one has an official number, and now it's going through the process. We had to wait for the town board to do the incentive zoning before they could submit the proper We had to wait for the town board to do the incentive zoning before they could submit the proper documents.
One of the neighbors that.
Yes.
Get a lot of water back there.
Correct. Yep. Well, we're hoping that the detention pond, especially on the northeast corner, will alleviate some of that. And if Lance and his fellow engineers look at it properly, and we need to have it a little bigger to make sure of that, we'll do that. Because it's, it's a concern of ours as well, that we don't make matters worse, certainly. And if possible, make things better. Okay? Anybody else have anything to say about this project? Anybody online? Nobody's on, though.
Nobody's online.
Nobody's online right now. So, anybody else have anything? Okay, this is public hearing and, uh, we have a couple resolutions, correct?
Correct. One is classifying seeker.
One is declaring our intent to be lead agency, right? That's the first one. So we have a resolution declaring our intent to be lead agency for a thirty-day coordinator review period. So has everybody had a chance to look at that? Do we have any comments? Have a recommendation to approve as presented? Moved by Doug, second to by?
Aaron.
Aaron, any other comment? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
David.
Aye.
Karen Sweeney.
Aye.
Adrian Bellis.
Aye.
Aye. That's the only resolution? That's what I thought. Okay. I get lost sometimes. There's so many different resolutions and everything. But, okay, so. We basically, it's our intent to do, to be lead agency on the environmental record review. There's thirty days where this will go out to all the associated agencies who might be interested. See if they agree with us. Then when we get that back and we declare ourselves lead agency, then we start the environmental review period, which is thirty-day period after that, right? Or more.
Then you.
Whatever it takes.
Then you read, get into the environmental.
Yeah, we get into environmental review at that. Okay? Everybody knows what's going on? Okay, thank you, Ryan. Thank you, folks back there. I appreciate it very much. Thanks for coming. Okay, so anybody here for that one? Uh, we're gonna move on to the next one, which is a preliminary, well, let's see.
Final.
I'm sorry. We had the site plan and subdivision. We were talking about both of them together. Okay, so next one is the Christopher Assant final site plan approval for a dwelling. Who wants to talk about that one? Anybody wanna talk about that? Go ahead, Dan.
I'll talk about that.
You're the man.
Real quick, uh, they did reach out to our office, uh, late this afternoon and was gonna try to be online today.
Uh-huh.
But they, uh, they saw the resolution. They had no issues with what was presented.
Okay.
And they were asking if they didn't, weren't able to be here that you guys considered the application and move forward being a final.
Okay, you don't have anybody online or anybody that speak on that one? Okay, let's turn it to staff. Anything else?
County D P W has reviewed the access highway permit.
Right.
He is ready to issue it pending your approval. Your approval has a condition that once they issue it, we get a copy for the file.
Okay.
That's it.
Anything else?
Nope, that's, I agree.
Yeah? Engineering?
Everything.
Okay, this is a public, no, this is not a public hearing. So staff, any comments on this one?
Nope.
Pretty straightforward. Okay, we have a resolution to, uh, approve this final site plan with conditions. There's always a condition, right, Ron?
Once in a while.
Um, do we have a motion to approve the resolution as presented since the applicant has agreed to it? Moved by agent, second to by?
Aaron.
Aaron, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
David.
Aye.
Karen Sweeney.
Aye.
Adrian Bellis.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item up. Moving right along. Farmington Whitestone Incentive Zoning Project. This is for a report and recommendations of the town board. Um, so let's give us a short rundown and see, tell us what's changed in the rest and we'll go from there.
Good evening. I'm Beth Run.
Yep.
Justin Miranda.
Yeah.
So, um, we got some good feedback from the planning board at last month's meeting.
Thank you.
I know you needed to take time to review.
Right.
Charity comments, we had information. Uh, we had made some modifications on the values offered. Um, we received comments, so we made a few changes. I think there's significant positive changes that, uh, we will be welcome at work.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so we have, uh, good plans. Hopefully you had a chance to see.
We just got them, what, today?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, we just got them. And we got copies on.
That you need to.
Oh.
Um, so, you know, we wanna maximize the, uh, the value of this commercial frontage. But you can see we have managed to accommodate an additional commercial use here.
Good.
Um, to do that, there's a little minor, minor, uh, tweaking that occurred in terms of the placement of the, uh, basement that would extend.
Right.
The south, uh, you know, really free, uh, you do. So it's an opportunity to enhance the commercial, maximize the frontage there on three thirty-two, which we think is available as well. Um, there was also an act that we look at phasing for the project.
Correct.
We're giving you a phasing plan. We're showing three phases. We're showing first phase with this, um, what is anticipated to be self-storage on forty-one. Uh, couple of the commercial, uh, parcels and the first hundred units of residential in first phase. Second phase has the additional commercials, um, another hundred units, and then we have third phase for the residential. I will say that if the commercial takes off and all those paths, um, can be leased up, which we hope there's something that happens. Uh, we're looking out that that happened. That could all actually be built.
It could be built much faster.
Yeah. So those are really some modifications we have, um, for you. We're happy to answer your questions. If you have any additional information, the board has spent a fair amount of time with it. Um, so we're again requesting that you hopefully give us a favorable recommendation.
Okay.
A favorable report back to the town board.
Okay, we do have a draft report that Ron has worked on with us and we have a resolution that would, uh, give me the authority to sign that. And, uh, Ron, what's next?
Yeah, the only change that was made to the previous draft that you received is we included the contribution towards the sanitary sewer project on Beaver Creek Road. A hundred thousand dollar cash contribution to that project. Um, since it doesn't look as though the state's going to help the town out with funding that project.
Yeah.
We're very thankful for, uh, the applicant agreeing to, uh, make that happen. That's a very important aspect.
And we added in the phase.
Yes.
Which we think is a great idea and we like that you've already done it. You put it in there because Ron and I were talking about that'd be a good idea and give the town board the additional ability to, uh, put some parameters possibly on their percentage done before they do residential efforts.
Yeah, it'd be quite a tension, but I would keep the, the road as a close step that.
Part of the first phase. Right, that's an important one, too.
It, it is important because it helps alleviate the congestion that exists now. At forty-one and three thirty-two, as you know, there's, there's a gas station. It's got a driveway there and it just takes one left turn to screw everything up. And, uh, this, this will be a great relief.
Dan?
Um, I don't have any additional comments.
Tim?
Um, no, I think we've already made our comments on that.
Into P R C a couple times. Lance?
I agree. I don't have anything to offer at this time.
Okay, um, board, you guys get a chance to review again the draft letter. I thought it was well done. Doug, what do you got? Anything?
Not really related to the.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yep, yep. Okay. Adrian?
Um, so is this the same map we got last time?
No. Well, the same map, it, the, the business, the commercials.
Yeah, I saw that, but so on the second phase there, the dedicated road, I thought there was no driveways into those apartment complex.
That's not gonna be a dedicated road. The only dedicated road is from ninety-six.
No, no.
This is the first. It isn't dedicated to none in the second phase.
Oh, there, there's gonna be driveways going into the units, but there's not gonna be individual units backing onto the town road.
Also, there'll be five road cups there.
Yeah, right.
Oh, I see what you're, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
They're roads. They're not driveways that you would have and people backing out into.
Yeah.
Because that's how it was originally designed. They were the other way.
Sorry. I got confused.
Yeah, no, they're not individual.
Well, yeah, one main driveway into those two buildings or.
Right.
They're into that driveway area for those buildings.
Yep.
Five road cups on that second phase. Four, two buildings and then the big main road that loops back around to the private room. Um, yeah.
Any else?
Yeah, I'm, I don't know what I wanna do with this project yet. I'm not a fan of it yet.
Okay.
Adrian?
Or Karen, I was, hey, I got more to say.
Hey. Um, I got something that, uh, something to look at that may change the way, way we do the site plan when it comes to that. So for the hotels, being that this is phase one, um, and this hotel being that you want four stories. I'd like your, the town or whomever to talk with, you know, the, the fire marshal. Um, you know, four stories, you get into a lot more fire protection. Um, and also the fire department, as it is four stories, um, we are getting close to the size that, uh, we have for a ladder truck to get to the roof if need be. So I'd like, like the fire department to, um, but. And then also being a incentive zoning, does that alleviate them from parking spaces for structures? The amount of par- parking spaces they need?
They're not requesting that.
They requested actually. You don't have.
Okay.
Okay, so if you do go with the hotel, then, um, please go through. Whomsoever goes through those.
Anything else? Hey. Okay, go ahead.
Does a signalized intersection have to be put in on phase one? Is that, or is that just depending on DOTs?
That depends on DOT, okay? As you may recall, DOT, uh, allowed the residential portion of pathways corners to be constructed without a signal. But they did in the resolution say that when commercial development occurred, they wanted to see an updated traffic study, which is the same as they did for the powers project that you just heard about. Their, their initial, uh, report said, you know, that the single, uh, entrance and exit lanes would be adequate for the residential portion. But when it came to the commercial, they more than likely are going to want a right turn lane as they have required in the past for like commercial drive, if you recall. Uh, so, you know, that, the whole thing there is, um, the developer of pathways corners understands that there is an obligation and commitment on their part. This client, um, the two of them together, I believe, can make this happen, uh, in a very effective way.
Okay, we have a resolution in front of us that, uh, gives me the authority to sign that. Is that correct, Ron?
That's correct. The planning board is.
Yep. Okay, so I have a motion to, uh, waive the reading and approve this resolution as presented. Moved by Doug, second to by?
Aaron.
Aaron. Um, clerk, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote.
David.
Aye.
Karen Sweeney.
Aye.
Adrian Bellis. Ken Hemminger.
Aye. Okay, take care of that and, um, move it on forward. Absolutely. Okay, that takes care of Whitestone. Comprehensive Plan Review, twenty twenty-three update report to the Town Operations Committee. Oh, um, everybody got a copy of the letter? Of the Comprehensive Plan, um, overview? I thought Ron did a wonderful job. Appreciate it, Ron. Great work. Um, did anybody have any comments or questions on this?
I do have it.
Okay.
Um, through it. There are a bunch of dates, um, in the. Uh, so January twenty-two through December of twenty. Is that when you plan to have the project completed or just you, th- those are dates where you want, you wanna start moving forward with the project?
It gives you a, a, a range of when the project would start. Uh, as you know, we ran into difficulty with the Brickyard Road take, for example.
Yeah.
Okay, that set that back. Um, tomorrow they're opening the bids on that. Uh, a year later and I don't know how many millions of dol- dollars more, but I, we, we. Alls, alls we did at the comprehensive plan is we identified priority projects and broke them out in sequence in the first five years to be implemented. Um, we have accomplished several of the zoning amendments. We have been successful in getting the sidewalk grants, uh, for the trail and also for the sidewalk project that'll go out to bid next month. Um, we have, you know, as I alluded to there, the report provided a history. So that when the next ten-year cycle of the comprehensive plan comes around, people will understand, you know, that here's where we were starting, here's what we ran into, the delays. You can never anticipate, uh, where you're gonna be, but keeping track of it helps to, uh, you know, maintain the, uh, credibility of the planning program.
Hmm? Any other comments? Ads have any comments? I didn't think you did. Do we have a, um?
It's in the, it's in the report at the bottom, the resolution.
Right. We have the we have the, uh, recommendation with the, um, ability to go ahead and get this thing taken care of. Um, do I have a motion to approve this?
I'm moved.
Moved by Adrian, second to by? Doug got in there a split second ahead of you. Any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote.
Please. Sweeney.
Aye.
Adrian Bellis.
Aye. Okay, next item up is review of the submittal dates. I looked at the submittal dates. I didn't see any issue. Note that we are not having a meeting, the first meeting in July. I don't know if you picked up on that, but it just spells right there in the, the town's July third, uh, celebration and it just didn't work out, so.
Are we really moving that one in twenty twenty-five Thursday or is that just?
That was a recommendation by, uh, my staff and the reason for that was obviously the first is a Wednesday. Uh, moving it one day to allow you guys to meet in the beginning of January to do your, uh, board procedures and recommendations. Uh, would not then screw up another date down below. If there's a different date that you would like to meet in the beginning of January, we can change that, but the. If there's a different date that you would like to meet in the beginning of January, we can change that, but the recommendation was right, it's just a tentative to set that for you guys to be able to do your rules and procedures. On that day.
And they're trying to keep it light for us so there won't be much on time.
Yeah, just like your, your first meeting in January this year. We've kept light so you, you guys can do your rules and procedures and get that adopted so that we can move through.
Right.
Whether.
Just having to do a Saturday in which we could certainly do if we had to, but. Okay. All right, so we've got that. Thank you for putting that together, Dan.
You just, are you guys are good with that? Can you just do a quick vote on that?
All in favor of the, the proposed middle dates, meeting dates, say aye. Aye, opposed, okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Letter from Walt Baker on Monarch Manor, Ron?
Yeah, as you recall, at the vast planning board meeting, there was some discussion about trees that had been planted out there on the berms and whether or not they were a variety of species that were acceptable to the town. And we got a letter from Mr. Baker explaining why one variety is better than another. Which triggered us to go back and look at the original overall concept plan because you know, that any incentive zoning plan has to have a overall plan approved, which serves as a basis for all of the amenities and, and all of the site improvements. And we found that there were some other omissions that hadn't been fulfilled in section one and were still missing in section two. That was confirmed today and sent out and will be discussed tomorrow at PRC with Mr. Baker. There's a, a number of additional trees, landscaping around detention facilities and whatnot that we, we miss, we don't have. And the, what the recommendation is going to be that the town board not approve any more letters of credit releases until next spring, when those trees and plants and other things get put in.
We're basically holding off any doing anything on the letter from Walt Baker until staff has a chance to work with the applicant on many issues, not just.
Right.
Okay.
Supposed to be offsetting varieties too, so if something came in and like these are all five are the same and they don't all die by a bug or something, there's will be opposites and now they're all the same is that?
If, I believe you should have gotten a copy of Mr. Baker's second letter, which he, he specified that he had made a mistake in not thoroughly identifying that there was a variety that was not all one species and.
I saw the one where he said something about.
Answered, yes, you're absolutely right. That's what we have to look at, the bigger picture and everything, but there are ways, so we'll see what happens, you know. Redfield Grove, okay. Dan or Ron?
That's, I'm requesting that this be tabled to your first meeting in January due to a verification of their landscaping out there. It has come to light as of late yesterday, early this morning. Yes, that there's some questions if that has all been done and this would be a final release, so.
Correct.
I would just like some more time if the board would grant me that to be able to just review that a little closer.
Hold that off till the first meeting in January. Exactly. Give up the final release and then have other things to be done. Okay, next item up on the agenda. Sorry, next item up on the agenda is Director of Development Report.
Yeah, next Tuesday night, we have a public hearing on the adoption of local law number ten of twenty twenty-three, which is the Individual On-Site Wastewater Treatment Systems Regulations. Those have been reviewed by County Soil and Water. Changes have been made and we believe we're ready to take action to update to that chapter of the town code. I also did hear from Farmington Market Center. Yes, believe it or not. The one remaining concern was the condition that by a certain date, the hundred thousand dollar contribution for the Beaver Creek Sanitary Sewer Project that we talked earlier about with the paddocks landing in Whitestone. The applicant was concerned that the deadline that we had given, what happens if the state comes and approves the grant application? Would he still have to have that contribution? The irony of it is I've asked MRB to explain how the WEA grant process works. Wait, the, the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, that's what WEA stands for. Has only a twenty-five percent cap. So in other words, the town still would have to come up with seventy-five percent of the cost
Right.
of that project. The longer we have to delay that, believe it or not, the prices go up.
No.
Yeah, they seem to happen that way. So we hope that we can get this information to them and we can move forward with that rezoning, which has been long overdue. There's a lot of business that wants to come in there and we just hope that we can resolve this and move on. The only other thing is that we have looked at cost estimates for the sidewalk trail connection project. That two-point-four million dollar grant that we got. Well, that was before the inflation, before the concrete delivery debacle that's still going on and before all of the delays and getting people to ride trucks to bring the concrete. So gonna be difficult to complete everything that we said back in twenty twenty-one that we were going to do. And we'll just have to see. We're gonna have to prioritize these areas and come back later for a, another round of grant applications. But reality is, right now, the state won't give you any additional money. The new applications going in this year, well, January ninth of next year, does have a clause in there for additional funding due to inflation. Lucky them, unlucky us. But that's, that's the way it is. Other things that we're looking at are, are projects that will be coming along and you'll hear more about as, as we get closer. I, I can tell you that they have signed an agreement with someone for that project out there in twenty with forty-one eight, which will result in a revised site plan coming back for review of those Blackwood Industrial Park lots.
Yeah, they want to change the layout a little bit.
Yeah, they've got a new client that wants to do something a little different and we're waiting for them to come back and I'll let Dan fill you in on the rest of the stuff.
Hey, Dan, it's up to you, bud.
Ron always does this to me, so.
But he is listening to me this.
Yeah.
You're not, I'm telling you.
He fought me in a meeting that I might have not been, so. First off, let's talk about your next meeting that tentatively was scheduled for December one man.
So we got no application.
No applications for it. No, we have nothing scheduled for that one.
Anybody got a problem?
Okay.
Okay.
So. I would recommend the board review their rules and procedures.
Yes.
Because we did keep it light for your January third meeting.
John, send those out again to us, will you please? Just so they're on the top of their inbox.
So that would be the priority to get reviewed and hopefully approved at that meeting. With that said, you do have a bunch on the seventeenth that will be on there, but I will, as it gets closer, we will let you know what that is.
Okay.
Ron is correct, we do have still a steady stream of projects coming in for reviews. I don't want to get into them too deep yet because I think you'll start seeing them January and February time. So more to come on that. And we have PRC tomorrow afternoon, which is another light schedule just because it is the end of the year. Usually that picks back up around February time, so. There, due to the bid opening tomorrow for the tank, there's multiple bidders and they needed to have this room, which is the same room we need to have PRC in. So we moved PRC to the afternoon.
So if you're looking for breakfast, Lance is not going to be bringing it.
Hey, Jim.
Nothing really to add. Still looking for a mechanic position. Still.
All right.
Not there, but could really use one about this time.
Yeah, you're gonna have fun with the roads actually all day, so.
Yeah, it looks like some winners are gonna be coming in, so.
Yeah. All right, Lance?
Don't really have anything additional to add, so.
Keep a good eye on that. That one with the
Yep.
stormwater because we know that there's some real interest from at least a couple of the neighbors, of course.
All right.
We continue to.
Every project is important.
Well, we understand. We understand that. Okay, this is an open meeting. Does anybody have anything else to say? Hey, anybody? Well, my only comment is I know the staff is shorthanded. It's holiday time. Shorthanded with vacations and everything else. So if you need anything, give them a little time. Reach out to me if you have any issues and we'll go from there. Anybody have anything else?
I do.
Go ahead.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, man. Happy holiday for everybody.
Oh, yes.
With that, Doug motions to.
Adjourn?
Adjourn. Second by Adrian. All in favor, say aye. Say aye. My lord, what a night. Thank you, everybody.